Connecting with audio, or connecting to audio. Alderman Frauci, can you hear me? I was afraid of that. How about everybody else? Can I get a thumbs up if you can hear me? Perfect, thank you, thank you. And Alderman Hughes, your screen is dark and it says Town and Country. Is that Alderman Hughes? That's you? We are waiting. Okay. And since we have a little bit of time while, there's Alderman Frauci, while we're trying to locate or connect, I should say, we know where she is. While we're trying to connect Alderman Hughes, I want to report further that despite our best efforts over the last 15 minutes, and Ms. Comfort sits in front of me, so I have seen her working on two different phones and punching a whole lot of buttons, has not been able to restore our YouTube connection. And so rather that she will continue that effort, we will proceed with our meeting. Madam Clerk, would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag. To the heads of America.
To the republic.
To the republic. For which it stands, one nation under God. Invisible. With liberty. Justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. The meeting is hereby, or welcome to the Board of Aldermen Meeting for the City of Town and Country, Monday, June 8th, year 2020. The meeting's hereby called to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Allen?
Here.
Alderman Bennigas?
Here.
Alderman Butler?
She's muted.
Alderman Frauci?
Here.
Alderman Holman?
Here.
Alderman Mortland?
Here.
Alderman Whitmire?
Here.
And Alderman Hughes? I don't see her on my screen.
She's not on mine either, and we're attempting to assist her. Ms. Comfort is trying to assist her with a connection.
So I'll go ahead and announce her as temporarily as absent. We'll note for the record if she is able to join us. Mayor Dalton is presiding, and we do have a quorum via video conference.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Technology has served us well, but it's not perfect, and we're doing the best we can. The minutes from our meeting of May 26th have been distributed to the board. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion's been made, does that gain any second? Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Alderman Frauci's recognized to offer an amendment.
I'd like to offer an amendment to the portion regarding commission updates. I'd like to change the wording to Alderman Frauci reported that the Planning and Zoning Commission held a Zoom video conference meeting on May 20th to discuss and recommend a new subdivision, comma, the allowance of chickens, comma, two CUPs, and forthcoming amendments to the PDD language. He added that the next meeting will be held on June 17th.
Thank you. Does that, does that motion gain any second?
Second.
It does. Discussion regarding Alderman Frauci's amendment to the minutes. Seeing none, all the opinion that motion should prevail, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any to the contrary opinion, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Further debate regarding the minutes as amended. Seeing none, all of the opinion those minutes as amended should be approved, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any to the contrary opinion, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. I do not have any indic-, there's Alderman Hughes. Welcome. Good work. Madam Clerk, your notation to the minutes that she was attempting to join, and she is now with us at this point.
Thank you.
There she is. We are, I do not have any hearing from citizens or indication that anyone in the community would like to address the board on a matter of interest or concern. Madam Clerk, do we have anything for purposes of direct?
No, sir, nothing was submitted.
Alderman Whitmire seeking recognition?
Yes, Mayor, I was just wondering, I see the recording light, I think, going. So we're recording this, and it will be posted so folks can view it later, given that we can't get the YouTube thing to work?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep. Yes, it is. Good, good catch, good comment, and we are recording it for later viewing. Under the topic of appointments, I want to indicate my intent. This should not come as a surprise, because I've previously done so. But in your packet, you should have an indication, I mean, I'm sorry, information on individuals that I am going to seek your support for the establishment of a Fire Services Task Force. I'm going to ask that that task force be led by two co-chairs, the Chairman of the Police, Fire, and Emergency Medical Services Commission, and the Chairman of the Ways and Means Commission. As it, it is directly in the jurisdiction and concern of those commissions, and I think they will give us good advice. On that commission, I'm going to ask for Don Sanders, who's from the Police, Fire, and Emergency Medical Services, and a resident of Ward 1. George Tarless, who is on our Public Works Commission and a resident of Ward 1. Amber Walsh, who is a former Fire Task Force member, a distinguished lawyer, and in my opinion, just a clear thinker. She has agreed to come back into service on this, and her experience will, I think, be a valuable asset to the commission. And Todd Solomon, who is from Ward 4, and he has a finance background. As you know from our contract, that we need to take action prior to 12/31 of 2020 by virtue of giving notice to West County Fire and EMS that we would seek to renew that contract or terminate. And so we need, in order to make that decision, naturally, we need our options, and that's the purpose of this Fire Service Task Force, to provide options and analysis to the board for that upcoming decision at year end. On the topic of communications and reports, I have just two things to note. First, we had a very peaceful student-led protest march in our community, among our neighboring communities of Ladue and Frontenac on Friday evening. And it was peaceful for, for any number of reasons. And in my opinion, a great deal of credit for preserving order and promoting community safety goes to Chief Cavens and his team that serve us every day well, and served us particularly well on Friday evening. The issue that is on the minds of these student protesters is, is very, very significant to our community, to our region, to our state, and to the world, frankly. And the fact that they were expressing themselves in our community in a peaceful manner is, in my opinion, part of the solution to this very significant issue, and not, like in some other communities, a continuation of the problem. I took issue with one of the protesters, among others, that carried signs "Defund the Police." It is certainly her right to express that opinion. It is not mine, and it is because of our police force and, and their relationships with our community that we are the very special place that we are. Dealing with social justice and racial disparity and related issues is critical. Defunding the police is not the way to go. But Chief Cavens, please express my appreciation, thanks, that of many, a lot of people that communicated with me, and I got to believe the entire Board of Aldermen feels.
Yes. Yes.
The other thing I would note is that we had an election on June 2nd. It was, out of necessity associated with the pandemic, put in, it was delayed from the April date, its traditional date, to June 2nd, and I have heard nothing, and council can comment on this. I've heard nothing but that it was a successfully-run election promoting social distancing and other health concerns and precautions. So when we are, when, when we, at the next meeting, we'll be swearing in the new alderpersons, and, and we'll continue to function from there. Further reports. Alderman Holman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to further expand on your comments to Police Chief Cavens and his team. With, within Ward 1, you know, we have over 50 residences that sit on Clayton Road. We have four office buildings, one service station, and one religious institution. And I believe, under Chief Cavens' leadership, it was really a model response. And with this balanced approach that he and his team took, I think it engaged both the freedom of speech and also the safety of our community. And so I thank him, I thank you, and I thank our city administrator for the execution of the student-led march.
Please proceed.
I don't have a good segue into my next point. It's with regard to Parks and Trails next meeting, but with a sincere thanks. Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it, and the residents do as well. Moving on to our Parks and Trails meeting, the next, our next meeting is June 15th. I don't, I do not know at this point in time what format it will be in. It's scheduled at 6:30. It could be virtual, it could be in person at a social distance. So please watch our city's website, and the details will be included on our calendar there.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Further reports. Alderman Allen?
Me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. This is not, I got my husband's iPad, and it doesn't work right, but I have it. Thank you. The Ways and Means Commission will meet Friday, the 19th, at 8:00 a.m. And I would also like to recognize and thank the leadership that we've had in our city, especially from Chief Cavens and others. Very proud, and it's the way it should be. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Chief. Alderman Frauci seeking recognition.
Hi, I definitely mirror all of those comments, and also appreciate our Police Chief's constant contact with me related to concerns we had from residents, and he reached out directly to them and really quelled any fears anybody had. I think the protest was, as you said, peaceful, and it was wonderful to see everybody working together towards that. I also want to thank the Principia School, who set up water stations. It was a very hot day, and I thought that was very kind of them to come out and support those children. Same as Pam, the segue's not going to be great, but Planning and Zoning will meet. It will be a Zoom meeting on June 17th at our regular time, 7:00. So tune in. Hopefully YouTube will be working by then.
Thank you. Further reports. Alderman Bennigas?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know when the appropriate time is to say this, so I'll make this in the form of a report. So I'd like to report that we haven't gotten a full update on Town Square for a very long time. And it would be great to get a report on that, a full report, including a report on the private part of that development. And it would seem to me that, at this point, a face-to-face with the developer would be a good thing for the board to have. So I just requested that if the city administrator could arrange that, it would be appreciated, maybe even at the next meeting.
Very good. Mr. Shelton, understood? Thank you, sir. Further reports. Alderman Butler?
Thank you. I had my last meeting of the, while I sit on the Board of the West County Fire and EMS Commission on Monday of last week. And they had some interesting details that are coming out of Jeff City on potential fire district legislation. So I will be sharing that with the next person that gets into the Police, Fire, and EMS Commission Chair position. They also covered the, their budget, they're very good about that, pretty consistently, and often, they go over their budget line by line. They do it during their actual work, their, their main board session, and they have it up on the screen, and everyone that's there, for the public to view and for the board to view, they can go over it at the same time. So I've been meaning to mention this for a while now, but I think this is a good time to do it. I think we should consider doing that for our public, instead of sending out finance reports or updates and emails. They need to really be disclosed and discussed in the open. So I know if we're stuck with Zoom for a little while, we can do that. They did it with Zoom for West County, and share the document, and there you go. So I would suggest, as you guys get to go forward, and make this new board work, that you maybe consider adopting, having all of your financial conversations during board time and in the open during the Public Works, the public board session. Thank you.
Thank you. Good, good points. I've, I hadn't heard that people use the fire protection districts as models of transparency, but that's good that West County is, is taking the lead in that respect. Alderman Hughes, you're seeking recognition.
Yeah, sorry I missed the other meeting, a little technical difficulties here. You had appointed me to take skip, excuse me, to take over the chairmanship of the Cultural Arts Commission. So we have set a date for the next meeting, when it will be held, on Monday, July the 6th, at 6:00, and we're anticipating Zoom at this time.
Thank you, ma'am, and I'm glad the technical problems are, are resolved. I, I was hoping to direct a comment to you. I talked about you behind your technical back during that meeting, because I was expressing my appreciation for the correspondence I got, including the, the depth and the sincerity and the rationale for your interest in a certain commission. And it helps me greatly, and I was using that correspondence, along with others from colleagues on the board, as a sign of my appreciation for
You're welcome.
the best way to proceed. Further reports. Seeing none, we'll move on with our, with our agenda. We're on the topic of unfinished business. It's item number one, Bill 20-23, co-sponsored by Alderman Holman, Hughes, Butler, and Allen. It was continued from our meeting of May 11th and our meeting of May 26th. I will now entertain a motion to, I'm sorry, without objection, I'll ask our city clerk to please second read that bill.
Bill number 20-23 is an ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 210, offenses of the municipal code of the City of Town and Country by the enactment of Section 210.1105 regarding open burning activities.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Alder, I didn't catch the person that moved approval. Alderman Butler moved approval, thank you, seconded by Alderman Allen. The bill is before the body. Alderman Whitmire?
Mayor, I'd like to move to accept substitute bill number 20-23 for consideration.
Thank you. Would you like to explain your, does that motion gain any second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Butler. Please explain your substitute, sir.
So Mayor, that includes language taken directly from the county ordinance that allows for burning of yard waste on three-plus acres, with related regulations for size, timing of the fire, fuels that can be used, smoke and ash control, and so forth.
Thank you. The motion's been made and seconded to adopt the substitute bill that is designed to make our ordinance completely consistent with the county's provisions. Discussion. Alderman Holman?
Mayor, I just wanted to share with the board that I did receive an email from a resident in Ward 1 with concern with the substitute bill, and concerned with this bill being outdated and somewhat archaic, and wanted to suggest that residents who have yard waste burns get a permit from the Department of Conservation. I touched base with the Department of Conservation, and, and they provide clinics for open burnings. They do not provide a permit for open burn, nor do they provide a permit for yard waste. And so while I am in agreement to see this substitute bill through, so that we are in line with the rest of the county, I am open to, if we experience complaints or concerns with residents as we move forward, that I'd like to re-address this ordinance.
Thank you. I, I think that's a very good observation, and I appreciate your diligence work. The, the comment I made during the work session bears some repeating that this does, the intent is to mirror us with the county ordinance. And then I think all alderpersons should be in touch with their constituents to get their reactions as to whether this is something that is, works well in our community, and if it does not, or if it needs refinement, then we should recontinue to revisit, or, I'm sorry, revisit the matter and continue to consider potential regulations. Further discussion. Seeing none, all of the opinion the substitute should be adopted, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any of the contrary opinion, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Further debate on the bill as substituted. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Butler?
Vote aye.
Alderman Hughes?
Aye.
Vote aye.
Alderman Whitmire?
Aye.
Alderman Holman?
Aye.
Alderman Mortland?
Aye.
Alderman Bennigas?
Aye.
Alderman Frauci?
Vote aye.
Thank you.
She votes aye.
Aye. Sorry, I didn't realize I was muted.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
The bill passes unanimously as substituted and becomes ordinance number 4364.
Thank you. We are on item number two. It is Bill number 20-24, co-sponsored by Alderman Frauci, Holman, Hughes, and Mortland. Without objection or recidere, please read that bill for the second time.
Bill number 20-24 is an ordinance authorizing a professional services agreement with Mueller and NEF for property appraisal services related to the Topping Road resurfacing and pedestrian improvements project, Phase 1.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Holman, seconded by, I didn't see that. Alderman Frauci, that was your second?
It was my first, actually.
I recognized Alderman Holman first. You, you are recognized as seconding the motion, and the bill is now before the bodies. Discussion. Alderman Butler?
Thank you. So we didn't really cover this topic during the work session, but some of the questions that came out of the work session have now got me thinking. During the work session, it was brought up by two of our aldermen that budget restraints were a reason that we might be considering holding off on some of these trail sidewalk projects. And it occurred to me that this is exactly what we're doing here. This is a $5,000 or so trail project that we're working towards, and no one discussed any issues with the budget there. So I would like to know from Pam Wrights, if she's on. I'm sorry, I can't see everybody at the same time. Do we have this currently in the budget for this 2020 year? And will this $5,000 break the bank if we move forward with this to continue moving this Topping Road project forward?
Ms. Wright, you're on mute. Did you hear the inquiry? The question is, is it in the budget? And is the $5,000 expenditure going to, quote, break the, break the bank? Close quote.
The, I believe that this is the, the Topping Road agreement. We have funds in the budget for Topping Road. I don't know that this particular agreement is part of that budget. That may be something that Tim could answer better than I could.
Yes.
Gregowitz?
Yes, that, that's in the budget for Topping Road. The reason we're moving forward with this is just to show reasonable progress with the STP grant, and the right-of-way acquisition is, you know, can take a long time. What this is asking for is waiver valuations, which is about the cheapest form you can get to gain right-of-way. It's, it's for anything that's under $10,000. So this doesn't require an appraisal, or review appraisal, or negotiator. So this is just something to show reasonable progress with the STP grant.
Thank you. Good, good response. Alderman Butler seeking further inquiry?
Yes, sorry. I had a little list. So I guess this might be for Mr. Gregowitz again, Mayor Dalton, but what is the date that we have? I know we went through this with Mason a lot with these grant funds. What is our due, due date, our deadline, that we have to be making progress for this STP, STP grant?
I, I don't have a deadline, but the STP grant process, East West Gateway, they want to see progress. I can get that to you, the drop dead date. But I don't have, I don't have that right.
Reasonable progress is, I think, the standard. Further inquiry? You have more on your list, ma'am?
No, that's good, thank you.
Thank you. Further debate regarding Bill 20-24. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Holman?
She votes aye.
Alderman Bennigas?
Aye.
Alderman Mortland?
Aye.
Alderman Frauci?
Aye.
Alderman Hughes?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Can I clarify? And I'm having trouble with my screen. Is this for the delay, or this is for this?
Thank you for the inquiry. I appreciate that. If you are ever confused when taking a vote, call upon me as the person that is running, running the meeting, because we do not want a vote on something that you didn't understand what you're voting on. So very appropriate question. The, the vote now, Alderman Allen, is to approve a professional services agreement with Miller and NEF for property appraisal services in connection with the Phase 1 of the Topping Road improvements. As Mr. Gregowitz indicated, this allows us to show reasonable progress in the, in support of the East West Gateway grant. So you are voting on the underlying bill.
And I'm a no.
Alderman Allen?
Alderman Butler?
Vote aye.
Aye. And Alderman Whitmire?
Aye.
Vote aye.
The bill carries seven to one and becomes ordinance number 4365.
Thank you. We're on item number three. It's Bill 20-25, sponsored by Alderman Mortland, Frauci, and Butler. Without objection or recidere, please read that bill for the second time.
Bill number 20-25 is an ordinance authorizing a work order with H.R. Green for design services and permitting for the Mason Road multi-use trail project and amending the 2020 budget by increasing a Parks and Stormwater fund expenditure account and appropriating funds to cover the increase.
Thank you. Alderman Mortland, you seeking recognition?
Yes, so as stated in the work session, there was some concern around some of the language, and, you know, this came out of the Public Works Commission, and I don't think we, we looked at, it's not a multi-use trail project anymore, and now it's just a replacement of a at, it's not a multi-use trail project anymore and now it's just a replacement of a sidewalk and looking at that. So the language might need to be rewritten. So we were looking to potentially continue it. My concern wasn't over putting this item as much on the budget, short-term budget. It was the larger item to where, you know, right now, once we have the design services, we'll know the actual cost and then at that point, we'll know where we put it, where it falls into the overall budget and projects and the overall process there. So my, my, my goal was to move to continue it, to get the language correct.
Alderman, is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Does the motion to continue the matter gain a second?
Second.
It does. Discussion. Alderman Frauci was seeking recognition.
I was, but not on the continuance motion, on the bill itself.
Okay, well, we'll get to that then. Alderman Benegas.
Thank you, Mayor. Could we get some clarification as to what language is being talked about here? I'm in agreement with some of the other discussions happened, that this project is a, just a ridiculous embarrassment to the city, has been for a very long time. I think we all agree on that part. And so find a way to move this forward with haste seems reasonable to me. I 100% agree with you, let's not make another mistake in that haste. But I'd like for us to be very clear about why we're continuing it. So I'd like to hear that from Alderman.
So it was brought to my attention that there was basically some wording in there that referenced trails instead of the sidewalk. And then with regards to the, just the increase was making sure that was going to be the increased amount coming out of, out of public works, which it is. So it was just to make sure it was worded correctly as it processed through and went to, to the design and permitting stage. So we didn't have another, another trip or anything else from that standpoint.
Can?
Alderman Holman.
Can I add some observations to the language as well, please? So the ordinance itself, yes, where it says the Mason Ridge Multi-Use Trail, and if you follow the whereas down the page into section two in the Park Stormwater Fund, it gives you an account number and a title. And if you follow that title to our budget in the paperwork, it will tell you, any of the aldermen, any resident that looks that up, that that is for a Mason Road Multi-Use Trail for over $300,000 and that is tied to a $225,000 grant. So neither of those things are true for this particular ordinance. Further, the $55,000, where the from and the change to, the $55,000 is not on our current reportings of the state of our budget, where the encumbrances are coming out at $158,000. That $55,000 is not on your numbers that you have. So we have some cleanup work to do and I, I want to just every, I just want to, I guess, say this again with regard to county. This is a county road. This is a county facility. There's no question that this needs to go back to their compliance of a five-foot sidewalk. But to have the correct language, to work the numbers back to our budget, I think is appropriate here. It's not one or the other. It's actually both and I think the budget piece of the conversation takes precedence and then we can rework the language. That's my two cents.
Thank you. Further debate. Alderman Benegas.
I really appreciate that clarification. I hope that we're agreeing to agreement as a board, though, that we move this forward with, with haste and with excellence. This is just a terrible embarrassment. We got to get it right.
That was my observation, Alderman Benegas. No one is happy about where we are. Not the people that have been planning on this project for many, many years, not the substantial number of residents that came out in support of the multi-use trail, not the people that didn't want it impacting their property. No one is happy with where we are. The one thing that I can assure will not help the situation is we act in, is we, is we get something wrong for the fine. So that's, those are my observations. Alderman Butler?
Thank you. So I now have an additional concern, but I will save that for a few seconds. I would, I guess I have a couple of questions. One, I think we're looking at two separate, I know we are. There are several aldermen that are just looking at our ordinance wording and getting hung up on the fact that we title it Mason Road Multi-Use Trail and that is because that was the name of the project. We actually ran into a similar situation with, I think, a Ward 1 Stormwater Project where people got upset because the title of the project was some lake or creek and it was not, they thought it was in their neighborhood, but it really wasn't. Remember that? Yeah. So I don't think we need to get hung up on the title because this is what this project was called when it was started in 2015, 2016. So moving forward, to clean up that language is kind of silly because that's the only way people are going to be looking for it, to find out what the project is doing. But if you look at the actual, what we're paying for, which would be the H.R. Green's letter right underneath our ordinance language, that's actually called a sidewalk. So it's the Mason Road Sidewalk and Permitting Work Order Number One. Throughout that entire document, it's called a sidewalk. If we wanted to mince words and think that trails and sidewalks are very different, so the work that they're actually being paid to do, they know what they're doing and they know it's going to be a sidewalk and not a multi-use trail. Additionally, my, my heartburn here, besides not moving forward, which in my mind is not even an option, they have been sitting, the residents have been sitting way too long on a destroyed project that lots of fingers can be pointed at the city and to sit here and just say, we need to wait two more weeks, we need to wait a month, we need to wait till our budget, this project should be finished before all others because it was started before all others. It's $8,700 something dollars. We just passed a bill for $5,000 for a different trail. I don't think the residents in Ward 2 are going to find that very, you know, they're going to be a little upset with that, I do believe. This needs to have reasonable progress done. A year and a half or two years of this is not reasonable progress. So we can't do that to our residents. Additionally, I asked for the budget for this prior to this even being first read and I was given statements from Pam Rights and Bob Shelton saying the money was there and that that $55,000 was budgeted for this. So to hear now from an alderman that that's not the case, I now am really worried about our budget. So I was told it was there and it was already appropriate. It was already set aside specifically for this project, which means we needed to move forward. We had the money already set aside for it. So if that's not the case, we have a bigger issue here than just moving forward tonight with this project, which I will be doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion. Alderman Holman.
With regard to the, the money involved here, the 55 plus the additional request from the 8,700, I think a piece of the pie that's missing is that we don't know if that's the last request to complete this project. And, and, you know, speaking with Public Works, there could actually, there's a potential for another request for funding. So that's another piece that I'd like to understand. So if we do continue this and we do come back, we can include in a cover memo to anticipate a total cost of this project and not piecemeal it every step of the way through as we're really looking closely at our budget. And I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Frauci.
So I would like to know, Pam and probably Tim Gregwitz, specifically, what will you do in the next two weeks that will give me more information? And this is Pam Rights. What is it that I'm going to have two weeks from now that's specifically different than what I have today, other than changing the name of a project that was named in 2015? I mean, I would like to understand, Pam, exactly what budget information you're going to give me and Tim Gregwitz, specifically, how are you going to know two weeks from now without them doing any engineering work? What more will be required? I mean, you can't possibly give me any additional information in the next two weeks unless you hire engineers to give me additional information.
Right, yeah. I can, I can talk to that. We need plans in order to get the permit and we need plans in order to understand what the true cost of the restoration is going to be. We don't know that until we get the set of plans.
Okay, so can you give me?
Alderman, Alderman, please let him complete his answer to your question before talking over him.
No, I'm good. She can go.
Of course she can.
Thanks, Tim. No, I just, I really would like to know specifically, what will we have two weeks from today regarding the engineering that will tell me a better number than the one we have today? Will you have anything in two weeks if we don't do this engineering plan that will be different than today?
The engineering is going to be the same. You'll just have the updated wording.
So it'll say sidewalk instead of multi-use trail?
Right.
Which I could do on an amendment tonight.
Further inquiry.
I'd like to make an amendment.
You're, you're not recognized for that purpose, ma'am. We're on the continuance motion. Further discussion. All in favor of the continuance, please signify by saying aye.
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 Nay.
Okay. Ladies, I'm calling for the aye votes right now. I know you're excited. Please. All those in favor of the continuance motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those to the contrary, opinion nay.
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 Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
And before I call the roll, I'll just clarify that.
Actually, you know what? I'm prepared to call that. The motion is defeated. Further discussion. Seeing none. Now we are on the bill. Bill number 20-25. I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Alderman Frauci moves approval. Does that gain a second?
Second.
Alderman Butler moves, seconds the motion. Further discussion. Alderman Frauci.
I'd like to make an amendment.
Make your amendment.
I'd like to replace multi-use trail with sidewalk throughout the bill.
Everywhere, every place that there is the words multi-use trail, you want it to say sidewalk.
Yes, please.
Does that, thank you. Does that, motion gain a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Holman. Further discussion, a discussion regarding the amendment. Seeing none. All of the opinion, the motion should prevail, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any of the contrary, opinion nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Further discussion on the bill as amended. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Frauci?
Aye.
Alderman Butler?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Nay.
Alderman Benegas?
Aye.
Alderman Holman?
Nay.
Alderman Hughes?
Aye.
Alderman Whitmire?
Aye.
And Alderman Mortland?
Aye.
The bill passes six to two and becomes ordinance number 4366.
Thank you. We are now on the topic of new business. It's our warrant list in the amount of $1,078,928.81. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, this is.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Mayor, Steve Garrett, could, could I interject something at this point that has nothing to do with the warrant list, but with the procedures? I just saw an email. Somebody sent me an email saying that the, they're not able to either log in or call in and hear this meeting. I had thought you said that we corrected the technical issues. Am I, is the public able to access this meeting or do you know? I'm, I'm, I just got an email from somebody says they can't get into it.
Well, and I appreciate that. Mr. Garrett, thank you for bringing it to our attention. When we started this meeting, we were told that the problem was corrected. How are we doing, Ms. Cufford? The meeting, oh. So counsel, here is the situation. The meeting is being recorded. It will be made available on our website immediately after conclusion of the meeting. And if you are uncomfortable with, with this circumstance that people cannot access it through YouTube, that, through YouTube, then I'll look for your advice on how to proceed.
So they'll be able to access it immediately after the meeting? Is that what you're saying?
The meeting is being recorded, correct.
Okay. All right. Well, we just had the, I looked at the rules that were set out by the AG's office and you're supposed to notify the public as to how they can access it. I mean, we did that, but if they weren't able to access it and we're allowing them to be able to access it after the meeting's over with, maybe that's good enough, maybe it isn't. I haven't had a chance to look beyond the Attorney General's rules on it, so we'll address that.
I appreciate that. I, I, at a substantial distance, including that of being socially distant, Ms. Cufford is sitting across the room from me and I have sat here, watched her struggle with her computer and her phone and doing the best she can. We are living in the, within the confines of the technology that we have this evening and that is, that's the state of affairs. So what, what do you advise? Should we proceed and then post it with the recording or should we suspend the meeting and proceed in a different fashion?
Well, we're almost finished and the worst that could happen, I guess, is anything gets adopted tonight has to be adopted at another meeting.
Makes sense. Okay. Okay. I'm comfortable with that. We are on the, the new business item of our warrant list. It is in the amount, as I previously stated, $1,078,928.81. In a motion to approve.
Aye. So moved.
Alderman Allen moves approval. Alderman Mortland seconds. Discussion regarding the warrant list. Alderman Hughes.
Okay, I have a few questions on the warrant list where it says, I'm sorry, let me see here. It says that we have, bear with me here for a second, is that we've got pre-employment screening? Are we hiring right now or? There was a pre-employment screening on page five.
Mr. Shelton?
That's correct. We did hire a police officer who will be starting mid-June. We had delayed this hiring. We had an officer who left at the first of the year.
Okay.
Vacation coming up. It's important that we get this police officer onboard.
Okay. No, that's fine. I just didn't know what was, what the story was. Okay. And then, okay, bear with me for a second. What is MOST? Maybe I should know what that is, but I don't.
Mayor?
Yes, please proceed.
So the Missouri Saving is a program that the employee pays into 100%. It's deducted from their paycheck for college savings for students. The city doesn't pay any of that, all in all.
Okay, thank you. And let me see if there was one more. You already answered it, babe. You told me it was a new police officer that's being hired. That was my last question on the last page. Thank you.
Thank you. Good inquiries. Further discussion. Alderman Whitmire?
Mr. Mayor, back to the question to our city attorney, the notion around writing checks, are we expecting some kind of a decision in the next 24 hours or something after consulting with the AG or something? Should we hold off on actually writing these checks until we hear back from you or should we just proceed?
Counsel, you're on mute. The inquiry is, if we're taking this step to authorize the dispersments, is it, should we hold on a further opinion or should we proceed based upon the authorization that's granted at tonight's meeting?
I think you should go ahead and approve it, but if, and I'll stay here after the meeting and look at this, but if I, if I come to the conclusion that because, and maybe we should find out, make sure that nobody could see this, but if that's the case, that the public could not gain access to the meeting, it, it may very well be that we want to hold off doing that. I mean, I, you know, if, if part of the meeting is to authorize the checks. authorize the checks, and if the meeting is deficient because the public could not access, we obviously don't want to send out checks.
So we, we meet via facsimile correspondence on the warrant list in our second meeting in November. And perhaps at other occasion, on other occasions, would it be possible to publish the something so that the, clearly that the, the meeting was, was posted, and the public had the opportunity, was supposed to have, and we intended for everyone to have the opportunity to access the meeting? Since it was not due to technical difficulties accessible, can we publish the warrant list for comment? And, and not, in receiving none, then act accordingly?
Well, as long, if, if, if you do the, if you want to do the warrant list, we would still have to do the 24-hour notice. And like we, like we, like we do, I assume that that's the way we do the warrant list when we do it by facsimile, and then confirm it at the next meeting, which is what we do also.
Mayor, could I just state something for the record, too, while we're on this subject?
Yes, ma'am.
It's Ashley. I just want to note for the record, since we're already in this and dealing with it, that we did solicit comments before this meeting. So all of the agendas, all of the postings, all the emails that went out, did ask that people submit public comment to me on any agenda item by 4:30 today. So people wouldn't be able to submit comment during this portion of the meeting anyway. But 100%, if they're not able to see it, that, I'm with you on that. I just wanted to make sure that it was noted that we did not receive any comments on any of these agenda items as solicited in the agendas.
And Ashley, am I, am I correct that, that if the public had been allowed access to this meeting, if they weren't, that they're not, you know, other than the emails that they're asked to send, they do not, I do a lot of these meetings, so I can't remember. They do not, they're not allowed a public comment during the meeting. Is that correct?
No, sir. It's completely passive participation by the public.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, and I don't, I, I'm not taking issue with your words, counsel. But it's not that they're not allowed to. It's we don't have the ability to recognize them electronically.
And I get that, and they don't have to. It's your meeting. You don't, they don't have to be able to, to comment. But they do have to be able to attend the meeting.
Yes. And I, I would prefer that they be actually able to comment, but we just don't have the, the capacity to do that. Either to, under tonight's circumstances or the other format that we've been operating. I am I think these are very good points, and we're proceeding very cautiously and with regret that we are where we are. But I think I'll, I'll call for a vote on the warrant list. And then if, counsel, you believe through either communications or research with the Attorney General's Office that we need to take some additional steps, then we will immediately take those. All the opinion the motion should prevail, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any of the contrary opinion, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Could I make a, could I clarify something? And I guess I'd like to apologize. I was messing around with my screen, seeing only half of it. I, I'm not asking to change the record of the official vote on 2024, but I just would feel better if I own up that at that point, I thought we were voting on 2025, because I was totally frustrated. But I just wanted to say, I, I, my intent would have been to vote for 2024. I'm not asking for a change. But thank you.
Well, let me, thank you for saying that, Alderman. That's just a very, very honest assessment. And, and I tried to explain where we were in great detail so that, because I suspected you were confused, and I was surprised at your vote.
And you did explain it, and I still was so frustrated that, thank you. I'm sorry.
Counsel, before this meeting changes, if, if her changing her vote does not alter the outcome of the measure, is she allowed to do that? For some, there's something in the back of my mind regarding parliamentary procedure that if, in, prior to the term, to the end of the meeting, and she's not asking for it, neither am I. But if the opportunity exists where she, where her changing her vote does not change the outcome of the matter before the body, is she able to change her vote?
If, if she was, if, if she made a mistake, Robert Tools has a provision for mistakes. Obviously, if you, if, even if it were a mistake, and it did affect the outcome of it, and you, you allowed her to vote, you could be overruled, I guess, by the rest of the council. But if you're not overruled by, I, I don't see it as a problem. It's a, if it was a mistake, she has the ability to correct mistakes that she made. And the, the body itself is, you as the presiding officer, and then the body itself has the authority to accept that or not.
Look, we are a, a family of friends here in service to our community. And, and I applaud Alderman Allen's forthrightness. She's not asking for it, but I will, I'd recognize her to seek note that she would like to change her, from a nay to an aye on Bill 2024. And without objection.
So moved. I would like that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And without objection from any of her colleagues. Now, Alderman Benegas, you're seeking recognition, but you're not, do you want to speak on this point?
Yes, please.
Please proceed.
Because usually a, a member of the prevailing party can reopen a vote, isn't that correct?
Well, that's not what I was asking. And, and that is correct. If you, if you vote on the prevailing side, you can move to vote, you can move to have the matter reconsidered. This is, in this instance, it was to correct the record, because she just for the technical
I'm willing to make that motion if, if it's in, in order.
It would be in order, actually.
I'll make the motion for the vote to be reconsidered.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to reconsider the vote by which Bill 20-24 was, was considered. All the opinion that motion should prevail, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any of the contrary opinion, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Bill 20-24 is before the body on second reading. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Allen moves approval, seconded by Alderman Fauci. Discussion, seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Holman?
Aye.
Alderman Benegas?
Aye.
Alderman Mortland?
Aye.
Alderman Fauci?
Aye.
Alderman Hughes?
Aye. Sorry.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Butler?
Aye.
And Alderman Whitmire?
Aye.
The bill passes unanimously and becomes ordinance number 4365.
Alderman Benegas, that is how colleagues treat one another. Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Alderman Morton moves adjournment, seconded by Alderman Allen. All in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any of the contrary opinion, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. We're adjourned. And I apologize this evening for the
So sorry.
That's fine, Alderman Allen.
Thank you.
Thank you for your tolerance with our, with our technical difficulties. Thank you for the, the support of our police department. They are the best of the best, and they serve us very well every day. And we're a better community for it. Good night, everyone.
Thank you for the kind words, everybody.
Safe.
Good night. Good night.
Night.
You bet.